Before proceeding, I'd like to announce to our viewing and listening audience that we have American Sign Language Interpretation Services here this afternoon to assist those who are deaf or hard of hearing. This town hall is also being translated into Spanish and Cantonese for members of our community who speak those languages. Today's presentation will include details from an officer-involved shooting incident that ended tragically, claiming the life of Mr. Nelson Zetto. He was 37 years old. In the San Francisco Police Department, we recognize that our duty as sworn law enforcement officers imposes no more solemn obligation on us than to honor and respect the sanctity of human life. We also know that as police officers, we are sometimes required to use force, including at times deadly force, in the performance of our duties. Without suggesting a premature conclusion of the appropriateness of the use of force in this particular incident, I can express on behalf of all of us in the department, our sincere condolences to Mr. Zetto, his family, friends, loved ones, and for the loss of life they've suffered. We also recognize that officer-involved shootings can have traumatic effects on members of our communities, especially for individuals, family members, and loved ones of those who suffered trauma of their own from encounters with the criminal justice system, whether in San Francisco or elsewhere. To any viewers who experienced this trauma from this incident, whether from descriptions, videos, or images we will present during this town hall, please note that help is available to you. You may contact the San Francisco Department of Public Health's Crisis Line at 415-970-3800 for trauma services. Here's what we hope to accomplish today. First and foremost, in the San Francisco Police Department's aspiration to be a national model of 21st century policing, we work to earn the trust of those we serve by committing to transparency and to the tenets of procedural justice in this process and in this town hall presentation. Procedural justice depends on the legitimacy of police as well as our entire criminal justice system. With these town halls, we work to embody the foundational tenets of what procedural justice is all about. We will release the facts known to us at this time about this incident. We will do so in a manner that is impartial and neutral. We will answer questions from members of the public as well as members of the news media, and we will listen to public feedback. Commander Paul Yap will be presenting the facts of this case in a few minutes. Before turning the floor over to him, however, I want to emphasize that this incident is subject to multiple independent and ongoing investigations. As such, there may be some information we cannot release at this time, either because the release of certain information is prohibited by law, or because the release of certain information could compromise an ongoing investigation, or because certain facts have not yet been established with certainty. In other words, we are not able to release unconfirmed information. Next, Commander Paul Yap's presentation will include a detailed verbal narrative of the facts, as we know them at this time, as well as audio and video content from the officer-involved shooting incident. SFPD Specialist Officers who responded on the scene were wearing department-issued body-worn cameras, which were activated at the time of the incident. Consistent with our body-worn camera policy, Department General Order 10.11, you will see body-worn camera, or BWC, video from those officers from multiple perspectives. Currently, SFPD officers assigned to the Airport Bureau do not deploy with body-worn cameras, so there is no body-worn camera video from those officers. Please note that discussions between SFPD and SFO officials to deploy Airport Bureau officers with body-worn cameras had already begun prior to this incident and are ongoing. Surveillance video in the SFO International Terminal also captured the incident from multiple perspectives and will be included in Commander Yap's presentation. At the San Francisco Police Department, our commitment to full transparency has guided our officer-involved shootings investigations in town halls for several years now. Although our practices predate the enactment of many police transparency and accountability laws in California, we believe our approach has remained consistent with the letter and spirit of reforms implemented by Senate Bill 1421 for police transparency and Assembly Bill 1506 for police accountability. In fact, because of Assembly Bill 1506, the California Attorney General's Office is conducting an independent criminal investigation into this officer-involved shooting incident. As a part of this town hall, we are pleased to welcome the Chief of the Law Enforcement Division of the California Department of Justice, Chief John Marsh, to our town hall. Chief Marsh will speak to our viewing and listening audience after Commander Yap's presentation and will be available for questions during the question-and-answer portion of this town hall, with the understanding that all investigations regarding this incident are open and ongoing. SFPD's commitment to transparency in this process will also be reflected in our release of information online. Videos from this town hall, including audio recordings from 911 calls and dispatchers and the video footage I just mentioned, will be posted on SFPD's website at sanfranciscopolices.org. There, it will remain available in perpetuity for public inspection. The San Francisco Police Department directives mandate that we release the names of officers from officer-involved shootings unless safety concerns argue against disclosure. In this matter, we identified no safety concerns, and Commander Paul Yap will release the names of officers as a part of his presentation. I'd next like to explain the investigative processes for officer-involved shootings. San Francisco has a multi-agency response to these incidents, with each agency's investigation independent of the others. The officer-involved shooting incident is no different in terms of multiple agencies investigating independently. However, because the San Francisco International Airport is located in San Mateo County, a different jurisdiction from the city and county of San Francisco, this investigation was initially under the jurisdiction of San Mateo County authorities, who activated their OIS protocol, or their officer-involved shooting protocol. Reportedly, notifications were made to the San Mateo District Attorney's Office, the San Mateo County Sheriff's Office, the San Mateo County Sheriff's Office Forensic Laboratory Division, and the San Mateo County Coroner to handle their respective investigations. Although the San Mateo County District Attorney's Office, under most circumstances, has jurisdiction and control over criminal investigations for officer-involved shootings in their county, certain circumstances, as outlined by California Assembly Bill AB 1506, provide that the California Department of Justice assumes jurisdiction and control over officer-involved shootings or officer-involved shooting criminal investigations in any county in the state of California if the circumstances are determined to align with the response protocols as prescribed by AB 1506. In this incident, San Mateo District Attorney's investigators were the first to arrive on scene and began to conduct their criminal investigation. After further discussion between the San Mateo County District Attorney's Office and SFPD, the California Department of Justice Division of Law Enforcement were notified and responded to SFO. California DOJ's California Police Shooting Investigations Team, also known as CA PSIT Agents, later arrived and were briefed by the San Mateo County District Attorney's Office and the SFPD. At approximately 1:55 PM, California DOJ assumed jurisdiction over the criminal investigation as the lead investigative agency. In addition to these state and San Mateo County authorities, these other independent -- excuse me, these are the other independent investigations involved. First, the San Francisco Police Department's Internal Affairs Division is responsible for conducting an administrative investigation to determine if officers who discharged their weapons in the officer-involved shooting are in compliance with the standards and requirements of SFPD policy. The San Francisco Department of Police Accountability, also known as DPA, is also conducting an independent administrative investigation. And San Francisco voters created DPA as a successor to the Office of Citizen Complaints with their passage of Proposition D in the June 16, 2016 election. DPA investigates all SFPD incidents in which any of our officers discharge a weapon within the course and scope of their duties, whenever that discharge results in an individual's injury or death. I'd like to finally add that we value community feedback, and we take it very seriously. Based on feedback from prior OIS town halls, we will take questions and answers, or answer them to the best or to the extent that we're able, understanding that this incident remains an ongoing investigation on multiple levels. We're allocating one hour for public comments and questions after the presentation, and will conclude this town hall at 5:30 PM or earlier if there are no further questions or public comments. Thank you for joining us today, and now I'd like to introduce to you Commander Paul Yap.
Thank you, Chief Scott. Good afternoon, everyone. The officer-involved shooting, or OIS, incident discussed in this presentation involves four uniformed patrol members of the San Francisco Police Department, from the Airport Bureau, Field Operations Bureau, and Special Operations Bureau, including members of the Specialist Team, which I will be explaining later. In addition, members of the San Mateo County Sheriff's Office responded to the scene to assist with the incident. The OIS occurred on Thursday, January 20, 2022, at the San Francisco International Airport, or SFO. The San Francisco International Airport is located in unincorporated San Mateo County, but is owned and operated by the city and county of San Francisco. SFPD Airport Bureau officers responded to a call for service of a suspicious person in the International Terminal of SFO. The precise chronology of this incident is currently under investigation by four different agencies. The times presented here are approximate. The following is a summary of the events as they are understood as of today, Monday, January 31, 2022. At approximately 7:26 AM, SFPD Airport Bureau officers were dispatched to a call of a suspicious person in the International Terminal at Security Checkpoint G. The person was in a public area by an information booth across from the BART station entrance. The airport's Communication Center broadcasted to the responding officers that several individuals had reported a male subject with no luggage who was holding his midsection area as if trying to hide something. The subject was described as an Asian male adult in his twenties, five feet seven inches tall, and 150 pounds. The individual, who was later identified as Mr. Nelson Zetto, was wearing a gray jacket and black pants. Officers responded to the International Terminal on foot and on bicycles. The officers met with one of the reporting parties, a Covenant Aviation Security Supervisor, who directed officers to Mr. Zetto. Mr. Zetto was standing alone between an information booth and an ATM. As officers approached, Mr. Zetto removed what officers described as a handgun from inside his jacket and held it with the muzzle pointed at the floor. The officers drew their department-issued firearms and ordered Mr. Zetto to drop the weapon. One officer broadcasted over the radio 221 and requested a code 33. SFPD radio code 221 refers to a person with a gun, and code 33 means emergency, clear channel. Mr. Zetto did not drop the weapon as officers ordered, and he began walking away from the officers towards an area staged with construction equipment. Officers saw that Mr. Zetto was also holding onto a knife in his other hand. As officers broadcasted 222 over the radio to alert other responding officers, SFPD radio code 222 refers to a person with a knife. Mr. Zetto was in a publicly accessible area, which includes SFO International Terminal Security Checkpoint G, a BART station entrance, a TSA Pre-Check Office, escalators to the air train, public restrooms, elevators, and a reflection room. Additionally, there were restricted areas, accessible only to authorized SFO employees. Officers took cover behind various pillars and partition walls, and they continued speaking with Mr. Zetto, who identified himself by his first name, Nelson. He stated that he lived on Market Street in San Francisco. Officers continued to speak with Mr. Zetto to establish rapport utilizing de-escalation techniques. Mr. Zetto slowly walked behind a commercial lift and placed his knife down on top of a tire. Mr. Zetto reached inside his jacket and said, quote, "I have another gun, and this one's loaded," end quote. Mr. Zetto removed what officers described to be a second handgun from inside his jacket. He was now holding onto two handguns, one in each of his hands. Additional Airport Bureau officers responded to the scene with extended-range impact weapons, also referred to as ERIWs, or less-lethal weapons. Officers also responded with tactical shields. All Airport Bureau officers on scene were trained members of SFPD's Crisis Intervention Team, or CIT. At approximately 7:42 AM, Airport Bureau Sergeants established a command post and formulated a plan to contain Mr. Zetto in the area to ensure public safety. The event commander declared this to be a critical incident. Officers assisted in evacuating SFO employees, members of the public, and travelers in the immediate area, and shut down elevators and escalators. Officers coordinated with airport communications to lock down the entrance to BART and advised TSA Pre-Check employees and other SFO employees nearby to take shelter. BART service to SFO was temporarily suspended during this incident. Additional resources summoned to the scene of this critical incident include a hostage negotiations team, specialist team members, a tactical unit, and medics were also requested to stage in the area. Airport Bureau officers and a hostage negotiator from the San Mateo County Sheriff's Office, or SMCSO, maintained a dialogue with Mr. Zetto, who still held onto the two handguns. Officers pleaded with Mr. Zetto to put the weapons down, and that they were there to help him. Mr. Zetto walked back and forth slowly, pausing for short intervals with both handguns pointed towards the floor. At one point, Mr. Zetto told officers to shoot him, quote, "center mass," end quote, adding, quote, "make sure you aim," end quote. Officers reiterated to Mr. Zetto that they did not want to shoot him and only wanted to get him help. Mr. Zetto stated, quote, "Thank you for your service, I respect you guys," end quote. He then apologized and stated several times, quote, "I'm sorry," end quote. Members from the Specialist Team responded from various district police stations in San Francisco. Specialist Team members are patrol officers who have received specialized tactical training for high-risk operations, like those involving critical incidents such as barricaded suspects or hostage negotiations, and those involving search warrants and arrest warrants. While on duty, specialists carry additional tactical and medical equipment. As a Specialist Team member arrived at SFO at approximately 7:57 AM, they were briefed about the incident by a Specialist Officer assigned to the Airport Bureau. They subsequently relieved most of the Airport Bureau officers in the inner perimeter. As the specialists positioned themselves in the inner perimeter, they were armed with department-issued rifles. Several specialists were also equipped with 40-millimeter Penn Arms ERIWs that deploy a less-lethal foam baton. During the negotiations, Mr. Zetto told officers he had something stuck in his throat. Officers offered him medical attention, but Mr. Zetto stated that it was, quote, "too late," end quote, and the hospital couldn't help him. At one point, Mr. Zetto complied with the SMCSO hostage negotiator's request and placed one of the handguns on the floor. Mr. Zetto still held onto the other handgun. Mr. Zetto slowly walked behind construction equipment and started walking to his left. Officers gave him verbal commands to set the other gun down, but Mr. Zetto continued to slowly walk to his left, away from yellow stanchions, towards the TSA Pre-Check Office and Security Checkpoint G. One of the specialists announced a red light, red light warning, which is a term used to alert other officers that an ERW projectile would be deployed. The specialists then deployed the less-lethal projectile at Mr. Zetto. Mr. Zetto faced the officers, but continued to sidestep slowly to his left, away from an area with staged construction equipment, towards the hallway and office spaces. Mr. Zetto still had a handgun in his left hand at his side. Officers on scene continued to give verbal commands to Mr. Zetto, but he did not comply. The specialists once again gave the red light, red light, less-lethal warning, and deployed additional 40-millimeter less-lethal projectiles at Mr. Zetto. Mr. Zetto had the handgun in his left hand, and he began to elevate the handgun towards the front of his body. At least one of the four officers involved in this incident discharged their firearm at this time. Two shots can be heard on body-worn camera video footage. Mr. Zetto fell to the ground. Mr. Zetto was in a semi-reclined position on the floor. Specialists and officers repeatedly yelled for Mr. Zetto to, quote, "put the gun down," end quote. Mr. Zetto reached across his body with his right hand towards the handgun located on his left side. Mr. Zetto then raised his right arm towards the officers. Some or all of the four officers involved in this OIS discharged their firearms, which can be heard on the body-worn camera videos. Mr. Zetto slumped to the floor with the handgun nearby him. The specialists used tactical shields and approached Mr. Zetto. A Specialist Sergeant moved the handgun away from Mr. Zetto's body, and several specialists began administering emergency medical aid to Mr. Zetto. Medics arrived on scene and continued to render aid to Mr. Zetto. Mr. Zetto was later pronounced deceased at the scene. Specialists checked the surrounding area and located an injured male in the adjacent hallway where the OIS occurred. Specialists rendered medical aid to the male who had a wound to his leg. Medical personnel arrived on scene and transported the injured male, who had non-life-threatening injuries, to Zuckerberg San Francisco General Hospital. Additional information. Evidence. The San Mateo County Forensics Lab responded to SFO and processed physical evidence at the scene. Video footage. SFPD Specialist Officers were wearing department-issued body-worn cameras, which were activated at the time of the incident. Surveillance video, or CCTV, from SFO International Terminal also captured the incident. Involved SFPD Airport Bureau officers did not have body-worn cameras, as they do not currently deploy with body-worn cameras. The issuance of body-worn cameras have been discussed and proposed with SFO authorities prior to this incident. There may be outstanding surveillance video from BART and other unknown sources at this time. The subject. The decedent's name is Nelson Zetto. His date of birth is November 6, 1984. Involved members. The San Francisco Police Department officers involved in this officer-involved shooting are Officer Eric Whitney, star number 4045, assigned to the Airport Bureau; Officer Oliver Lim, star number 2001, assigned to the Field Operations Bureau; Officer Stephen Wong, star number 1299, assigned to the Field Operations Bureau; and Officer David Wakayama, star number 2046, star number 2046, assigned to the Field Operations Bureau. Current investigations. The State Attorney General's Office is conducting a criminal investigation into the incident per Assembly Bill 1506. The San Mateo Coroner's Office is conducting an investigation into the cause of death. The San Francisco Department of Police Accountability is conducting an independent administrative investigation. The SFPD Internal Affairs Division is conducting an administrative investigation. The remainder of today's presentation will be provided in a multimedia format. In an effort to provide a transparent and comprehensive perspective of this incident, the San Francisco Police Department will provide SFO Communication Center calls, police dispatch audio, body-worn camera footage, surveillance video footage, still photos provided by the California Department of Justice, and related visual aids. Our presentation today consists of relevant known video and audio at this time, but it is not intended to provide all photos, videos, or testimonial information related to this investigation. We will now provide a chronological presentation of this incident using these multimedia sources. The SFO surveillance videos shown are provided to the San Francisco Police Department by the Records Unit of the SFPD Airport Bureau Administration Division. At select points, to increase transparency for viewers, the weapons of both the officers and the subject have been enhanced to allow for better perspective of this incident. Please note that this presentation, the enhanced videos, and the raw body-worn camera videos will be available on the San Francisco Police Department website immediately following this town hall event. Prior to the beginning of each segment of audio or video, we will provide a brief description to orient the viewer to the time, place, and location of the content to be shown. Viewer discretion and listener discretion. You are about to see relevant video footage and learn about other evidence related to this case, so you can have a better understanding of what occurred based upon what we know right now. We are still in the early stages of an administrative investigation that can take months to complete, and our understanding of the incident may change as additional evidence is collected and reviewed. We do not draw any conclusion as to whether the officers acted consistent with our policies and the law until all facts are known and the investigation is complete. A word of caution. The images and information you are about to see and hear may be disturbing. When a police officer uses force to arrest a suspect or defend against attack, the images are graphic and may be difficult to watch. In addition, there may be strong language used by those in the video. In addition, there may be strong language used by those in the video. Viewer discretion is advised, especially for young children and sensitive viewers. We encourage those in need of help to contact the San Francisco Department of Public Health As we are working through a few technical difficulties, I am going to read the viewer and listener discretion once again. You are about to see relevant video footage and learn about other evidence related to this case, so you can have a better understanding of what occurred based upon what we know right now. We are still in the very early stages of an administrative investigation that can take months to complete, and our understanding of the incident may change as additional evidence is collected and reviewed. We do not draw any conclusion as to whether the officers acted consistent with our policies and the law until all the facts are known and the investigation is complete. A word of caution. The images and information you are about to see and hear may be disturbing. When a police officer uses force to arrest a suspect or defend against attack, the images are graphic and may be difficult to watch. In addition, there may be strong language used by those in the video. An employee of the San Francisco Airport called the SFO Communication Center and stated that five passengers reported to him a suspicious male was just outside of the checkpoint area, holding his midsection as if he was carrying something. The employee advised he could see the subject and provided a description of the male and his current location to Airport Dispatch. The caller updated Airport Dispatch, stating that the subject was still in the terminal by the BART area, and the caller would be leaving the area. This audio was provided by the Records Unit of the SFPD Airport Administration Division. The SFO Communication Center provides dispatch services for the Police Department at SFO. We will now play the SFO Communication Center call from the SFO employee regarding the suspicious male at International Terminal G.
Police Dispatch, do you have an emergency?
Uh, I don't have an emergency. I'm at [BLEEP] at Checkpoint G. I was trying to get the non-emergency number.
This is it. Hang on just one moment for me, one moment.
Sure. Yep.
And where are you calling from?
Um, [BLEEP] International Terminal G. Um, the reason why I'm calling is I've had about five passengers let me know that there is a suspicious male outside of the checkpoint here, um, and he's holding his, he has no bags with him, he's holding his midsection as if he's carrying something.
What's your name?
Uh, my first name's [BLEEP]. My last name's [BLEEP].
What's the phone number of the [BLEEP]? Okay, have they give you a description, or do you have a visual on it?
Yeah, I have a visual on him. He has a gray jacket, he's an Asian male, early, 750 pounds. Yeah, early twenties, gray jacket, black pants, early twenties, black, Asian male, black hair.
Holding his stomach.
He's, uh, holding his stomach. Uh, right now, he is where the BART area is, he's not inside the BART station, but he's near the restroom on the departure level by the BART area.
Okay. Okay. We'll get to that, thank you.
Yeah, in any event, um, I, I'm gonna head back inside right now, but, um, if you need anything, please let me know. But usually one or two passengers are there, but I've had five different people tell me about this guy, that's why I'm calling you, okay?
Yeah, no problem, I've got your phone number if you need it. Thank you.
Bye.
The second SFO Communication Center call came from a passenger who was at Security Checkpoint G. The passenger stated he observed a suspicious male with his hand in his jacket pocket, who appeared nervous and was walking in and out of the TSA line. The suspicious male's behavior scared the passenger, and he left the area. The passenger provided a description of the suspicious male to Airport Dispatch. This audio was provided by the Records Unit of the SFPD Airport Bureau Administration Division. We will now play the second SFO Communication Center call from the passenger.
San Francisco Police Department Bureau.
Hey, I'm at the airport, uh, Gate G. Uh, the TSA entrance, very suspicious guy. Is he there?
Yes, description, white, black, Hispanic, Asian.
Say it again?
Can I get an description of him, white, black, Hispanic, Asian?
Uh, Asian, um, he's wearing, uh, I think a green jacket. He's keeping his hand in his pocket, he's walking in and out of line, looks very nervous.
You said, you think, you think green jacket?
I think it's a green jacket, it's, it's a, it's a white jacket, but he has his right hand in his pocket, like he's holding something, and he's walking in and out of line and looking very suspicious and nervous. To the one where I left, I was scared.
Okay, are you a passenger in this airport?
What? Say it again?
Are you a passenger in this airport, or are you an employee?
I'm a passenger.
Okay, can I get your name, please? Okay, what's your line? What's the phone number, we could reach you back after this thing. Okay, so are you still in line at the checkpoint?
I'm not, I, I left, I was wigged out.
Okay. Okay, got it, thank you.
We will now play the police radio transmission from the incident at SFO International Terminal. This audio was provided by the Records Unit of the SFPD Airport Bureau Administration Division, and consists of the radio transmissions of the officers involved in this incident. The audio consists of their observations, coordination of resources, and associated actions. Please note, this audio recording is not in real time and only includes radio transmissions related to this incident.
Six forty, seventy-one and seventy-two for cover. For a nine seventeen, information booth across from BART, between the info booth and the restrooms, there's five to six passengers reporting an Asian male in his twenties, wearing a gray jacket, black pants, about five-seven, one hundred fifty, holding on to his midsection, looking as if some, he's trying to hide something.
Seven, one, five. Seven.
Fifty, fifty-one, put us on that one.
Fifty, fifty-one, ten-four. Units on that nine.
Gun, gun! Code thirty-three.
Code thirty-three on PD two.
Gun and knife.
I copy, it's a gun and a knife.
Two twenty-three.
Two twenty-one.
Two twenty-one and a knife.
Copy, two twenty-one. Confirming the location.
Two twenty-one and a two twenty-two.
One from the reflection room. Uh, TSA.
Ten-four, I copy, uh, two twenty-one and a two twenty-two, reflection room.
Get the crowd here so we can get all these people out.
Notify BART as well, those doors need to be closed.
Two twenty-five, BART.
And that's [INAUDIBLE] inside.
Seventy, Adam, ten-four.
Three, Adam, responding.
Three, Adam, ten-four.
Ninety-nine, code three, courtyard one.
Tom ninety-nine, ten-four.
Call three, two, ready, show.
Five, Adam, ten-four.
Mary three, Mary nine, four ninety-eight.
Ten-four.
Notify BART, we got eight passengers coming out.
Ten-four, we'll notify BART.
Get out here!
Fifty, ten-four, grabbing the shield.
Next to the reflection room.
Last unit?
Behind equipment, next to the reflection room.
Ten-four.
Need a negotiator, he's requesting.
You're fifty-one, we need to close down the BART.
Fifty-one, BART's been advised.
Forty-one, I'm gonna go to BART. Stop, everybody.
Forty-one, ten-four. Two, two, go ahead. Ten-four.
Down there, zone.
Ten-four, ninety-seven.
Ninety-nine, ninety-one, ninety-seven.
Tom ninety-nine, ninety-one, ten-four, ninety-seven.
Ninety-nine, can you have them shut down the elevators on ITB?
Ten-four.
Can you block the elevators, the way to lock them down? The one's right outside BART.
Ten-four, you want the elevators to stay open in front of BART? Ten-four.
Three, I'm coming over.
In Cal, we already checked the bag. Fifty-one, is there a one-hundred yet?
Boy one oh-nine, coming ninety-seven.
Ten-four. Go ahead. Ten-four, in communication with the subject.
Subject's back, it's been cleared by K nine.
Ten-four.
Ninety-nine, we need to get those elevators shut down over by BART on ITB side. Passers are coming out of the elevators.
Ten-four, central plan's been advised.
Boy one oh-nine, could you advise the ADM regarding the incident, whether they want to close down Checkpoint G?
Ten-four.
Yeah, two, two twenty-one in the hand.
Ten-four, copy, two, two twenty-ones in hand. Ten-four, two twenty-one in his left hand.
Yeah, boy one oh-nine, uh, can you guys contact, uh, Ops downtown, ask for, uh, the H and T to respond?
Ten-four.
You have a, here, wait outside, door five, or maybe door three, standing by.
Forty-one, I'm gonna pull the emergency stops on the elevators.
Ten-four.
Point two, two, I'm ninety-seven.
Ten-four.
Anybody need a shield, I'm bringing one in, door six.
Two, two, the elevator's been stopped here. I got one full, I'm just waiting for the other two to open.
Ten-four, I copy, uh, you're talking to the subject, and he, to put the guns, put the guns down.
Yeah, there's one in each hand.
Ten-four.
Two, two, do we have a four oh eight standing by?
They've been advised.
Two oh two, two more shields coming in, just gonna see if we can get another couple.
Uh, two oh two or one oh nine, do we have a cell phone for, uh, Ops to call for H and T response? Got it.
Still moving closer to us.
Ten-four, subject's moving closer.
Can you look up an address? Just push back to anyone's name. Your first name, his name is Nelson.
Ten-four, copy that [BLEEP] with the first name Nelson.
That's what you're saying.
Oh, one twenty, coming ninety-seven, with a shield.
Mary, do just be advised, we're stopping access to G side on courtyard one for the moment.
Something access to courtyard, to G side, courtyard one.
Point two, two? Point two, two, go ahead. Clearing, you had a critical incident, please notify TAC, any specs, code three.
Ten-four.
Forty-one, all three elevators should be locked.
Ten-four.
Yeah, boy, uh, one oh nine, setting up a temporary command post in front of, uh, aisle two, front of aisle two.
Ten-four, temporary command post at aisle view.
One oh nine, gonna get a unit to start a crime scene log.
Eight-five, ten-four.
Two, two, there's an audible alarm right outside of the reflection room, is there a way to turn that off?
Ten-four, we'll double check.
Two oh two, your command vehicles outside door six, I'm bringing another three shields, a helmet out of this.
Seventy-one to the seventy. Seventy-one to the seventy. Seventy, go. Seventy, seventy-one, go.
To the right of the H and machine.
Go ahead.
Hey, Row. Rowena, you better make sure no one's in the restrooms, if he heads over there, he's gonna have a hostage.
Restroom's been cleared.
Boy one oh nine, ADM Rotiski's ninety-seven.
Sixty, go ahead. Ten-four. Go ahead. Sixty, Adam, ten-four. A from, they're responding code three. Ten-four.
Boy one oh nine, can you have Airport put some volunteers at the bottom of the, uh, escalator coming up to the ITB from arrivals G, and also the air train platform from coming down?
Ten-four.
Mary, do just be advised, we're gonna be running counter flow from upper ITB to get vehicles trapped, uh, in, uh, near the scene out.
We have three IRWs on scene.
Ten-four. Three IRWs on scene.
Eighty on TAC.
They're gonna...
Yeah, boy one oh nine, uh, DOC's been notified, and, uh, they're doing the call-out.
Three hundred is notified and enrobed.
Yeah, boy one oh nine, uh, we're gonna shut down the, uh, departure level terminal, uh, there's too many passengers here.
One oh nine, ten-four, shutting down departure level.
Uh, Sergeant, this is, uh, empty, I'm gonna shut down the elevator.
Any help on canceling that alarm?
Ninety-nine, looks like he put one of the firearms down. Hey, one gun, one gun was put down, but he pulled the knife out. He has a gun in one hand, a knife in another.
Ten-four. Go ahead.
Viewer discretion, keep up both guns again.
Ten-four.
We're here, Jake.
You show Tom one oh eight, I'll follow on scene.
Ten-four.
Dispatch escalator eleven thirteen, I'm eleven fourteen, has been shut down. Yeah, boy one oh nine, uh, uh, TAC is ninety-eight, ETA roughly ten minutes.
Go ahead. Ten-four. Agency's been advised, but there's no ETA. A from, David's been advised.
David, one hundred two, uh, Rowena?
Go ahead.
Hey, your TAC guys are rolling up, they don't know where to go, you want us to send them down to, uh, door five?
Yeah, upper ITB, the last door, um, right before they hit, uh, door five, door five.
All right, looks like they're coming ninety-seven, I got, I think, three units.
Four, thank you.
Calling for the two oh two, uh, they were just telling me they, um, might have some radio issues. Yeah, fly, it looks like a couple of specs are now hitting towards door six.
Ten-four. Seventy, go ahead.
Have a radio switch at oh-seven, I'm sorry, four-eight hundred, can you make sure that is not happening?
Ten-four.
Be advised, Bart PD is securing the doors to go into Bart.
Ten-four, Bart PD's securing doors.
Boy, three-hundred, can you put me on that, uh, two-twenty-one call in about a few minutes out?
Boy, three-hundred, ten-four.
One-oh-nine to three-hundred, uh, command post to that, uh, front of aisle two.
Ten-four.
Got a four-oh-eight standing by?
They've been advised, they should be responding code three.
Four-oh-eight standing by on the, uh, A-side.
Ten-four, on the A-side, four-oh-eight standing by A-side.
Yeah, one-oh-nine to the units on the, on the inner perimeter, as soon as specs come ninety-seven, uh, we're gonna replace you with them, copy?
Six point two-two, can you nine-one, headquarters?
Yeah, one-oh-nine, the specs are now heading into inner perimeter.
Ten-four, specs are heading on the inner perimeter. Go ahead. Ten-four, five cars, not here.
Yeah, one-oh-nine to the units in the inner perimeter, be advised, specs have switched over to that new channel.
One-oh-nine, for attack one is patched to our PD two.
Thank you. A from.
Boy, three-hundred, show me coming ninety-seven at the command post.
Boy, three-hundred, ten-four, coming ninety-seven, command post.
Spec one-hundred, this'll be ninety-seven.
Spec one-hundred's ten ninety-seven. Go ahead. Six point two-two. Just be advised, SFC's advising there is a male subject that's sleeping inside the reflection room.
Ten-four. So we, uh, there's two, the second one was told to go inside the stairwell, not sure if we're gonna be receiving an alarm.
Ten-four.
Two-two to boy five? Two-two to five? Five?
Six-seven zero, just...
Go ahead.
Speaking with one, one IRW deployed.
Ten-four.
Six-seven zero.
Seventy, go ahead.
Fired, one down, giving commands. Standing by.
Copy, one down. Four-oh-eight? Ten-four, they're standing by A-side.
Hey, let's get a four-eight up here. Let's get a four-eight up here, dispatch, it's gonna be, we're gonna be providing medical aid, let's get a four-eight.
Ten-four, they're on the A-sides, we'll have them respond out.
Ninety-nine, one, door six, four-oh-eight to door six.
We will now provide a graphical map of the San Francisco International Airport, as well as enhanced graphics to display the general area of the officer-involved shooting. Security checkpoint G, the Bart entrance, the reflection room, and a bystander are featured in this graphical map for reference. Please note, the graphics and map are approximations and not shown to scale. In the following segments, we will show the surveillance video footage from the San Francisco International Terminal and the body-worn camera footage of officers responding from San Francisco. Please note that the airport bureau officers do not deploy with body-worn cameras. During the response, officers utilize multiple force options, which will be seen and heard in the following videos. We will now play video footage number one from a surveillance camera provided by the airport security operations center. The angle of the camera is from the public walkway, which is pointed in the direction of an information booth and an ATM. This video shows the initial police encounter with the subject, where officers first observed a handgun and a knife. This portion of video includes enhancements, which allow for the viewers to better see the handgun and knife in Mr. Sito's possession during his interactions with the responding officers. Please note, surveillance video number one footage captures only video, not audio. We will now play video footage number two from a surveillance camera provided by the airport security operations center. In this video, you will see Mr. Sito with a handgun and a knife in his hands during the initial encounter with the responding officers. The enhancements will allow for viewers to better see the handgun and the knife. Please note, surveillance video number two footage captures video only, not audio. We will now play video footage number three from a surveillance camera provided by the airport security operations center. Mr. Sito is seen in the video initially with a knife and a handgun. During the encounter with the responding officers, Mr. Sito removes a second handgun from his jacket. As officers maintain a dialogue with Mr. Sito, he is seen pacing with both handguns in the area outside of the reflection room. The enhancements will allow for the viewers to better see the two handguns and knife. Please note, surveillance video number three contains video only, not audio. The video provided to SFPD was over forty-five minutes and shortened here for presentation purposes. The entire raw video footage will be available on our SFPD website after the town hall. We are now going to play body-worn camera video footage from Officer Number One. This video will be played in real time. The body-worn camera video footage will begin with Officer Number One at SFO, Terminal G, his response to the critical incident and his actions leading up to the OIS incident, which includes the deployment of his ERIW, or less lethal weapon. Please note, the faces of the San Mateo County Sheriff's Hostage Negotiator and a bystander depicted in this video have been blurred and personal information has been redacted. In addition, some of the video has been blurred due to graphic content.
Yep. Unless you wanna come?
Anyone got forty? Anyone got a forty?
Do you have a red light ammunition? Red light, ammo's in there, we've been talking to this morning.
Copy.
Red light, red light, let's meet, uh, copy. Be on the lift?
You may have access to the reflection room from back on the A-way side, so do you want to set up a couple of people in the backside?
Yeah, just...
From the A-way?
Just so we can...
Or we can kind of, kind of flunk them in?
We're in low priority, I don't wanna pull on the situation, make people back, just cover it, so we can see.
Perfect.
Cut this wall, or move in between.
Just right, right on the other side of this wall?
Alright. I'm a nice guy. You look like a nice guy. We're here to help you.
Hey, we got an extra shield in our car, uh, three forty-nine if anybody needs one.
We don't want anything tragic to happen. You want something bad to happen to me? No, you're a nice guy. Let's work through this. Huh? What are you waiting for?
You wanna take over his spot with the rifle?
I, I can't hear you, Nelson. Okay, hey, just put the gun down, and let's talk about this.
You got a bad view. Hey, do we, do we wanna move to the other side to our left? Do me a favor, uh, I'm gonna take your spot.
Nelson, talk to me, man. Nelson, just take a deep breath. Take a deep breath. Think about me, hey, what's my name? To help you. Hey, don't come any closer, Nelson. Unless you set that gun down. Set the gun down. Take a deep breath, set the gun down. Set the gun down.
Hey, if he crosses that yellow, I'm going red light.
Go ahead, go ahead, get ready. Hey, no, 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 Nelson, don't, Nelson, don't do this.
Nelson, stop walking forward.
Don't walk, come any closer.
Nelson, stop walking forward.
Go back over there, Nelson, just go back over. Go back over. Take, walk backwards, man, walk backwards, thank you, one step at a time, slowly walk back. No, I want you to walk back, walk back and we can talk. There's what? Okay, no, there's nothing stuck in your throat, just walk back.
If, if, if there is, we can help him, but he has to put the guns down.
Hey, if there's something in your throat, we can help you, but you just gotta put those guns down.
I'm right here.
Look over at me.
Hey, do not cross that yellow line, or I'm gonna, I'm gonna hit you.
Okay? Nelson, walk back, drop the guns. Work with me, you gotta work with me, man. I'm a nice dude, everybody here's nice, we're all here to help you. Well, we gotta help you, you gotta put those guns down so we can help you. Right? Thank you for backing up, man, now we're working, now just set the guns down. Huh? Hey, just put the, take a knee, put the guns down. You're good. Thank you for backing up, now we're working, right? Nelson, what's my, what's your last name, Nelson? What? I, I, okay, hey. Hey, Nelson?
Edge, right down this little barricade on the right, we can see him. Nelson, stop there. Nelson, you need to back up! Nelson, you need to back up or I shoot. Back up, Nelson, please.
Take a step back, Nelson, you gotta work with me. You gotta work with me, Nelson. Thank you. Dude, you're doing good, man. All I need to do is, just take a deep breath, bro, and put the guns down, then we, then we can help. Hey, Nelson, just set the guns down, dude. You are? Just put them down, super easy, there we go, one knee at a time, just, all you gotta do is just drop one knee. Drop one knee, and then drop the other knee. Good. That's it, that's it, just take a knee. Just take a knee. Nelson. Look at my hand Nelson. Nelson, over here, look at me. See my hand? That means stop. Okay? You're moving up too much. Back up, take a knee. Right there, don't come any closer dude. Right there.
Go ahead.
Nelson, you gotta back up buddy.
Yeah, just back up a little bit. Drop the guns. Just let him hit the ground. Open your hand up, super easy. Open your hand up, just like that, gun falls on the ground. Okay? There you go. Just open your hands up and let the guns go on the ground. Can you do that for me? Yeah, and they, they get solved super easy. All you have to do in this situation is just open your hand up and let the gun fall on the ground. We'll take it from there. Okay? Okay Nelson? Over here Nelson, look at me man. Nelson, what's my name? When I get home, we're gonna talk about how things, how well things went today. I'm gonna tell them how nice of a guy you are and that you dropped the guns and everything was fine. Just drop, you're gonna put the gun down? Thank you. Okay, just set it down. Awesome.
You still got one more, right?
Okay.
Nope.
Hey, listen to me Nelson, stop.
Don't touch it.
You got your other hand, do the same thing with your other hand. Stop, no.
Do not. Hey, red light, red light!
Stop. Put the other gun down, just like you did with that one. We're working Nelson. Nelson, look at me, we're working together. Do the same thing with your other hand. Set it down the same way, nice and slow. You did that on your own, beautiful, super slow. Go super slow again and set it down.
Pick it up, red light, red light!
No. Perfect, set the other gun down. We're halfway there Nelson?
I've, I've no shot now with you here.
No, 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 no. Hey Nelson. Nelson, listen to me. Set that other gun down.
Red light, red light!
Nelson. That's alright, I'm right behind that Nelson. Hey, I can't see you. Nelson.
Red light, red light!
On your right, on your right.
You want me here? ERW right, ERW right. Nelson, put the gun down.
Hey Nelson! Nelson! Nelson, look over here. Nelson, move back over. Don't move anymore Nelson.
Hey, if he crosses the yellow, I'm hitting him again.
Hey Nelson!
Hey, careful, about to red light, about to red light. Red light, red light, Nelson, move back to your right or I'm gonna hit you. Nelson, move back to your right or I'm going to hit you. Red light, red light, let's leave though! Move it, run red. Hey! Secure the other gun. Hey, I got turkey kit, I don't have medkit, who else has a medkit?
There's people behind, there's people behind.
People where?
Check down there.
I'm going with you.
I got you.
Hey, cuff him, cuff him, cuff him, move!
Go cuff him right now. Go ahead, search him, make sure you don't leave him else on.
Hey. Oh shit. Two holes in the door.
Hey, I got, I got first down, hey, are you okay? You're late? Okay, hold on, I'm coming to you, are you okay? Stay down, stay down.
Front, hey, put your hands up, show us your hands. Hands up.
Can you take him, take him?
I'm with you, I got ERW, I got handkerchief.
We are now going to play the enhanced body worn camera video footage from Officer Number One. In the replay of Officer Number One's body worn camera, you will see an enhanced image of an ERIW or less lethal weapon and a rifle, which are stock photos of the weapons and not photos of the actual weapons used by the officers on scene.
No, 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 no. Hey Nelson. Nelson, listen to me. Set that other gun down.
Red light, red light!
Nelson. That's alright, I'm right behind that. Hey, I can't see you.
Red light, red light! Nelson, move back to your right or I'm going to hit you. Red light, red light, let's leave!
We are now going to play the body worn camera video footage from Officer Number Two. This video will be played in real time. The body worn camera footage will begin with Officer Number Two just outside of SFO International Terminal G, show his response to the critical incidents, his actions leading up to the OIS, and his actions taken after the officer involved shooting. Please note, there is a brief period with no audio when the officer's BWC is in buffering mode. In addition, some of the video has been blurred due to graphic content as well as personal information.
What we got? I can't hear you.
From the A side, just so we can... Or we can kind of, kind of bunch them in.
I don't have comms, someone's getting confused.
He's behind the...
Moving. You got me? Move over there.
Hey, is anybody in the reflection room back there?
What'd she say?
There might be one person, we don't know. But there's someone in the corridor over there. Watch out.
In the corridor right, okay.
Okay, right behind the, the lift.
Right behind the lift?
Right behind the lift, there was someone standing there, we don't know where.
Unless you set that gun down. Set the gun down. Maybe keep running, set the gun down. Set the gun down. No, 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 Nelson, don't, Nelson, don't move. Nelson, don't move. Nelson, stop walking. Hey, go ahead Nelson, just go back over. Go back over. Walk backwards man. Walk backwards, take a step at a time, slowly walk back. No, I want you to walk back. Walk back and we can talk.
There's something stuck in my throat. There's blood. There's something stuck in my throat.
Hey, no, there's nothing stuck in your throat, just walk back. Hey, hey, if there's somebody in your throat, you can hold it, you can stop it, there's nothing. Look over me. Hey! You're not walking on the line, Nelson, okay? Nelson, walk back. Walk backwards. Over there. I'm a nice dude.
Hey, if we get a shield up here Steve, that'd be great.
Is there a shield back there? Is there a shield back there? Over there, if you check back there, is there a shield?
Nelson, what's my, which one is it Nelson?
Shield coming up.
Copy, copy, copy. Thank you, thank you.
That's a partition right there, right?
To my left?
To the, to the right line in front of us, where the lift is?
Yeah.
Right, there's a partition.
Nelson, you need to back up. Nelson, you need to back up.
Coming up? Where is it?
I don't see, no visual, no visual.
Behind the lift, behind the lift.
Steve, are you saying there's a partition, he can pop into this hallway behind the yellow?
Is that a partition between the, the wall right back there? So you can't get through this way? It can only go this way, correct? So that's open back here?
That's open back there.
Gotcha. And that's all open up back here, right?
Yeah, it's just like, it's a bigger, it's all...
Yeah.
Right there.
It's on the other side.
All the way to the end. So we have ERW right there. So that's a good position right there.
So where is? Coming up, blue, blue, blue? So where, where does that end?
Um, to the back office, I mean the yellow that we saw.
So goes back that way?
Yes, they've already been pulled from bunker now.
So we have people back there?
Yes, yes, and there's a whole bunch in that corridor.
Who's this?
Yeah, it's his stuff, that's already been cleared by K9.
Okay. Has anyone touched it anymore?
No, no, no.
Okay. Okay.
He's been walking now, back and forth, so in this corner right here. There's a homeless guy inside with a yellow, right here.
Okay, homeless guy over here, okay. So he's walking around through that there, pop out and be on the side of this partition.
So it's hallway right here?
Yes, so it looks the same on the other side as it does on this side.
Yeah? When you think it's happening behind the yellow?
Yeah, it goes to this hallway right in front of us.
That was just hallway. At the end hallway? Alright, alright, I can't, I can't see you.
He's setting it down.
I can't see you, I can't see one, I can't see one. That's one. Still got one.
Nelson, stop. You got your other hand, do the same thing with your other hand. Stop, no. Stop. Put the other gun down, just something in your hand. Work Nelson, Nelson, okay?
Can't see it.
Same thing with your other hand. Set it down the same way, nice and slow. You get that one wrong, you, super slow.
Got you, he's still got it, he's still got it. Left hand. Got you. I can't see the gun, I can't see the gun. Behind his hand, still behind, still behind him, still behind him. Still behind him. Still behind him. Put it down Nelson! Don't cuss! Nelson! Still got the gun. Where's my backdrop, team, how's my backdrop? How's my backdrop?
Backdrop is good, backdrop is good.
How's my backdrop, team?
Backdrop is good, backdrop is good.
On your right.
How's my backdrop?
Got you, got you.
Right, ERW right, ERW right.
Gun in his left hand, gun in his left hand, gun in his left hand.
I see it, I see it.
Nelson, put the gun down. Everyone, stop.
Hold up, hold up, oh, oh, oh. Gun in his left hand.
I understand.
Gun in his left hand. Nelson, don't go it. Hey, hey.
Put it down, put it down.
Put it down, hey.
Put it down, stop right there, put it down.
Don't move anymore Nelson.
Hey, if he crosses the yellow, I'm hitting him again.
Okay, hey, just get that 40 off, I told you that before.
Where's the 40, give me a 40.
Hey, we got a 40 M, we got a 40 M.
Hey, careful, block the red light, block the red light.
Give me a 40, give me a 40, give me a 40.
I'm gonna hit you.
Go back.
Is there a 40 here?
Or I'm going to hit you. Red light, red light!
Red light, red light, red light!
Put the gun down!
Put it down, put it down, put it down, put it down!
Oh, 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 oh! Hey, barrel, gun barrel down! Barrel down!
No, 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 no.
Fucking middle gray. Hey, move it up!
Shield up! Shield up! Shield up!
Hold, 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 hold.
There's people behind, check behind.
Render A, render A.
Let's go, we need medical, medical. There's people behind, hey, people behind, there's people behind, check down there. Hey, cuff him, cuff him, cuff him. No, don't cuff, don't cuff him right now.
Get medical A, search him real fast, make sure there's nothing on him.
Hold back, enough, take a breath. If somebody take my, take my pants, I give them away. Hey, that's not stripping the wall, watch it move slow. Somebody, can't see somebody right there?
Anybody fired? Alright, I need them up to the wall.
In the replay of Officer Number Two's body worn camera, you will see enhanced images of an ERIW or less lethal weapon, which is a stock photo of the weapon and not a photo of the actual weapon used by the officers on scene. The enhanced image of Mr. Cito's weapon is an actual photo of a weapon from the scene provided by the California Department of Justice.
Left hand. Gun in his left hand. Nelson, don't go it.
Put it down, put it down.
Put it down, hey.
Put it down, stop right there, put it down.
Don't move anymore Nelson.
Hey, if he crosses the yellow, I'm hitting him again.
Okay, hey, just get that 40 off, I told you that before.
Where's the 40, give me a 40.
Hey, we got a 40 M, we got a 40 M.
Hey, careful, block the red light, block the red light.
Give me a 40, give me a 40, give me a 40.
I'm gonna hit you.
Go back.
Is there a 40 here?
Or I'm going to hit you. Red light, red light!
Red light, red light, red light!
Put the gun down!
Put it down, put it down, put it down!
Oh, 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 oh! Hey, barrel, gun barrel down! Barrel down!
We are now going to play the body worn camera video footage. We are now going to play the body worn camera video footage from Officer Number Three. This video will be played in real time. The body worn camera video footage will begin with Officer Number Three already on scene at the critical incident at SFO International Terminal, show his actions leading up to the OIS and his actions taken after the officer involved shooting. Please note, there is a brief period with no audio
Red light, Nelson, red light, I'm gonna hit you.
Watch your right. Go back.
Nelson, move back to your right, or I'm going to hit you.
Nelson.
Red light, red light.
Put the gun down. Don't shoot him. Put it down.
Hold, 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 hold. Hold, 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 hold.
Gun barrel down. Barrel down.
Shield up, let's get, move up, get middle gray. Medical aid, shield up.
Move it up.
Shield up, shield up.
Shield up. Shield up. Moving, moving. Get the gun, get the gun, get the gun. Hold, 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 hold. Move. Behind, check behind.
All right, render A, render A.
Let's go, we need medical, medical.
Medical, medical on my back. There's people behind, hey, people behind.
It's gonna be, it's gonna be a revival.
Hey, cuff him, cuff him, cuff him.
No, don't cuff, don't cuff him right now. It's not ever, go ahead and search him, make sure you have any of the guns on him. Search, give me the medical aid immediately.
Hey, give my, give my medic stuff over my back. Enough.
Let's clear that reflection room. April, get some guns.
Where's that, where's the reflection man? We're gonna, we're gonna be out of there.
There's still contact with someone back there, right? Somebody, contact, somebody right there?
No, we're good, we're good. Hold right now.
Anybody who fired?
All right, I need them back behind the wall.
In the replay of Officer Number Three's body worn camera, you will see an enhanced image of Mr. Sito's weapon, which is an actual photo of a weapon from the scene provided by the California Department of Justice. In addition, some of the video has been blurred due to graphic content.
Shield up. Shield up. Shield up. Moving, moving. Get the gun, get the gun, get the gun. Hold, 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 hold.
Move. Behind, check behind.
All right, render A, render A. Let's go, we need medical, medical.
We are now going to play body worn camera video footage from Officer Number Four. This video will be played in real time. The body worn camera video footage will show Officer Four arriving at SFO International Terminal, his actions leading up to the officer involved shooting and his actions after the OIS incident. Please note, portions of Officer Four's body worn camera view were obstructed but captured audio throughout the incident. In addition, some of the video has been blurred due to graphic content.
From the OIS, just some, or we can kind of, kind of punch in. Or...
I don't have comms, so let me stick with you.
Just put it down. Right, right. Look at my face.
Rifle coming up behind you. I'm over here on top of you, okay? All right, okay. I can't see him. Yeah, I see him. You over me? Got it. That's the guy. Hey, is anybody in that reflection room back there? Do we know if that reflection room is clear?
One person, we don't know.
There might be someone in the reflection room.
There's someone in the corridor over here, to your right. Watch out.
There's a corridor to the right, okay.
Okay, right behind the, uh, the lift.
There's somebody there?
No, someone's stepping in there.
Steve, slavery?
No, I want you to walk back. Walk back when you talk. There's something stuck in my throat. There's something stuck in my throat. Hey, no, there's nothing stuck in your throat. Just walk back. Yes, you're right. Hey, hey, if there's something in your throat, you can hold it. He's stuck in there, there's nothing. Look over me.
Hey. You're not going to walk into the line. Close your mouth, okay?
Walk back. Hey, walk back.
Hey, if we can get a shield up here, Steve, that'd be great. Got it, I'm still on him. JP has one, we brought one with us. Copy, copy, copy. Thank you, thank you. To my left?
To the, to the right, right in front of us, where the lift is?
Yeah. So he can come through. Is he, is he coming up? Is he coming up? I don't see, no visual, no visual. He's behind the lift. Steve, are you saying there's a partition he can pop up in this hallway behind the yellow? Behind his back. Still got the gun.
Here we go. One key is locked. All you gotta do is drop one knee.
Tasting. Tasting, hands still behind his back.
Try and not stop. Move it up. Back up. Stay in the air. Right there. Nelson, move back to your right. Still hitting the ground. Both of your hands up. Both of your hands, just like that, gonna go off on the ground. Okay? There you go. Just both of your hands up, just left and right on the ground. You do that one? Do the one, uh, on the way. And then it's not super easy. All you have to do is...
So this hallway right here, he can pop into the hallway. When you say the other side, do you mean behind the yellow directly? Like behind the lift? At the end of the hallway? Lowering, lowering, lowering. I can't, I can't see if you dropped it. I can't see if you dropped it, I can't see if you dropped it. That's one. Still got one.
Stop. You got your other hand. Do the same thing with your other hand. Stop. Set, Nelson. Stop. Put the other gun down, you're stuck in your bag. Or Nelson, Nelson, okay?
I can't see, I can't see it.
The same thing with your other hand. Set it down the same way, nice and slow. You did that with your arm, you, super slow.
Back it up, he's still got, he's still got. Left hand. Left hand. Still got the gun, left hand. Still has one gun, left hand. I can't see the gun, I can't see the gun. It's behind his hand, still behind, still behind him, still behind him. Still behind him. Still behind him. Put it down, Nelson. Don't come. Nelson. Still got the gun. Where's my backdrop? Steve, how's my backdrop? How's my backdrop? How's my backdrop, Steve?
On your right.
How's my backdrop?
You're right, on your right, on your right.
Hey, gun in his left hand, gun in his left hand, gun in his left hand.
I see it, I see it. Nelson, put the gun down. Everyone, nah, hold up, hold up. Oh, oh, oh.
Gun in his left hand, gun in his left hand. Gun in his left hand. Nelson, don't go it. Hey, hey.
Put it down, put it down.
Put it down, hey.
Put it down, stop right there, put it down.
Don't move anymore, Nelson.
Hey, if you cross this, we yell, I'll hit you again.
Dude.
Forty, give me a forty.
Hey, hey, we got a forty M, we got a forty M.
Hey, careful. Off the red light, off the red light.
Hey.
Red light, red light. Nelson, back to your right, I'm gonna hit you.
Go back.
Nelson, move back to your right, or I'm going to hit you.
Nelson.
Red light, red light. Red light, red light.
Put the gun down. Put the gun down.
Oh, 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 oh.
Oh. Hey, barrel, gun barrel down. Barrel's down.
Fucking middle gray.
Medical aid, move it up, move it up. Shield up. Shield up. Shield up.
Moving, moving.
Get the gun, get the gun, get the gun. Hold, 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 hold. There's people behind, check behind. Render A, someone render A. I got a hole. There's people behind there. There's people behind.
Hey, people behind.
There's people behind, we gotta check down there. Someone check on me, we're start...
Cuff him, cuff him, move.
I, I...
Don't cuff him right now.
Hold it like that. Shit, I got two holes. Check here. Hey, do I got bodies? Someone hold on this door. Hey, I got, I got a person down here. Hey, are you okay?
My leg, my leg.
Your leg?
Yes.
Okay, hold on, move it, I'm coming to you. Are you okay? Stay down, stay down, stay down.
Hey, put your hands up, show us your hands. Hands up.
Take him, take him, take him. More bodies on me, someone take him.
We are now going to play body worn camera video footage from Officer Number Five. This video will be played in real time. The body worn camera footage will show Officer Number Five arriving at SFO International Terminal, show his actions during the OIS incident and his efforts and other officers' efforts in rendering emergency medical aid to Mr. Sito. Please note, some of the video has been blurred due to graphic content.
What is that? I didn't see the guns. I see it's going to the back. Need a male. Kind of recessed in the back area. He's saying that there's some, there may be some other egress point where he might be able to get out of it. We gotta cover that now. Cover that one, we'll get more attention.
And there may be officers back there. We tried, uh, dispatch to call their officers to see if anyone's there to take cover. I got no call back on that. Okay, they just gave this next. So next to him, there's a reflection over there. It's glass doors, uh, where people can sleep. They just put over the radio that someone's sleeping in there right now. And that's onto the same side.
I see him. Gun in hand, gun in hand. Go up, go up, go up.
Watch your right, watch your right.
On your right.
On my backdrop.
Right, on your right, right, on your right.
Gun in his left hand, gun in his left hand, gun in his left hand.
I got him.
Nelson, put the gun down. Everyone, stop, hold up, hold up. Oh, oh, oh.
Nelson, don't go it. Forty on your right side. Hey, hey. Put it down, put it down, put it down, hey. Put it down, stop right there, put it down. Don't move anymore, Nelson.
Hey, if you cross this, we yell, I'll hit you again.
Okay. Hey, Steve, get that forty on.
Hey, careful. Off the red light, off the red light. Red light, red light.
Red light, red light.
Red light, I'm gonna hit you.
Go back.
Nelson, move back to your right, or I'm going to hit you.
Nelson.
Red light, red light.
Red light, red light.
Put the gun down.
Put it down. Cut down.
Oh, 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 oh. Oh, 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 oh. Barrel down. Barrel down.
Fucking middle gray. Middle gray.
Move it up. Shield up. Shield up. Shield up. Oh. Get the gun, hold, 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 hold.
Move it, render A.
People behind, check behind.
Render A, render A.
I got a hole.
Let's go, we need medical, medical.
Medical, turn the key, medical, medical.
There's people behind, hey, people behind. There's people behind, we gotta check down there. I'll check on me.
Hey, cuff him, cuff him, cuff him. Move.
Don't cuff him right now. Move that other way. Go ahead and search him, make sure you have any guns on him. Search for, we get the medical aid.
Hey, give my medic stuff over my back. Enough. You all secure?
Yeah, it's right here, it's right here.
Hey, take my gun, take my gun, I can give medical aid. Hey, stop stripping the skulls, stop stripping the skulls. Let's get visual.
Heads up, there's still contact inside the car, right?
Somebody, the contact, somebody right there?
Alright, we're good, we're good.
We are now going to play body worn camera video footage from Officer Number Six. This video will be played in real time. The body worn camera footage will show Officer Number Six arriving at SFO International Terminal, show his actions leading up to the officer involved shooting, and his actions after the OIS incident. Please note, some of the video has been blurred due to graphic content.
Nelson, put the gun down! Nelson, put the gun down! Nelson! Nelson, move over here! Nelson, move back over!
Don't move anymore, Nelson.
Hey, if he crosses the yellow, I'll hit him again.
Right here.
Hey, careful. Off the red light, off the red light! Red light, red light! Nelson, move back to your right or I'm gonna hit you! Nelson, move back to your right or I'm going to hit you!
Red light, red light!
Red light, red light, that's three balls!
Put the gun down! Put the gun down! There's people behind, check behind.
Run away, run away.
Let's go, we need medical, medical. There's people behind, people behind, there's people behind, we gotta check down there.
Hey, cuff him, cuff him, cuff him, move! Where's the gun?
Don't cuff him right now.
Guns right here, guns right here.
Hey, give him, give him medical, give him medical. Hey, take my gun, take my gun, I can give medical aid. Somebody, the contact, somebody right there?
Anybody fired? Alright, I need that back on the wall.
In the replay of Officer Number Six body worn camera footage, a portion of the video was enhanced for the viewers to see Mr. Cito's movement and arm motions during the OIS incident.
Red light, Nelson, move back to your right or I'm gonna hit you! Nelson, move back to your right or I'm going to hit you!
Red light, red light!
Red light, red light, that's three balls!
Put the gun down! Put the gun down!
We will now play video footage number four from a surveillance camera provided by the Airport Security Operations Center. This portion of video includes enhancements which allow for the viewers to better see the handgun in Mr. Cito's possession during the OIS incident. Please note, Surveillance Video Number Four captures video only, not audio. We will now play video footage number five from a surveillance camera provided by the Airport Security Operations Center. The angle of the camera is from the hallway that is located between the reflection room and TSA pre-check office. This video captures a bystander who was in the hallway during the incident. A portion of this video was enhanced to allow for the viewers to better see the OIS incident. Please note, Surveillance Video Number Five captures video only, not audio. We will now display six total photographs taken by the San Mateo County Forensics Lab and provided to SFPD by the California Department of Justice. Some of the photos include a measuring device for reference. Photo number one shows one of the handguns photographed at the scene. Photo number two shows another handgun photographed at the scene. Photograph number three shows a knife photographed at the scene. Photo number four shows a forty millimeter Penn Arms ERIW that deploys a less lethal foam baton. This was referenced in the officer's body worn camera video as a quote forty, end quote. Photos number five and six show an expended less than lethal forty millimeter foam baton photographed at the scene. This concludes our presentation. Thank you. I will now welcome and introduce Acting Deputy Chief Denise Flaherty, who will provide additional information and updates from the SFPD Airport Bureau.
Good afternoon. I am Acting Deputy Chief Denise Flaherty, assigned to the Airport Bureau, and I will briefly share feedback from our community surrounding this event. The SFO community includes members of the public, travelers with an average of thirty to forty thousand per day, vendors, and approximately thirty-five thousand employees. The SFPD Airport Bureau's mission includes the daily building and fostering of relationships with our community, and the benefit of that engagement during these types of events was demonstrated in the feedback from our community to our officers. Members of our community expressed to officers the confidence they had and their continued safety as they observed the familiar faces of officers responding to the affected area. The SFO leadership team received feedback from the public, airport staff, and tenants who expressed the untimely notifications and directions surrounding the affected area left them feeling undervalued. The SFO leadership team has remedied this concern with the implementation of iPaws, an improved wireless alert system. The iPaws sends notifications to any person with wireless capability in the affected geomapping area. Messaging is conducted through the Airport Communication and Dispatch Center. This concludes my presentation on community feedback, and we will now return to Chief William Scott.
Thank you, Acting Deputy Chief Flaherty, and now we have Chief John Marsh from the California Department of Justice.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name's John Marsh. I'm the Chief of the Department of Justice Division of Law Enforcement. I'd like to start by thanking the San Francisco Police Department, especially Chief Scott for inviting us to participate in your town hall. I'd like to take a moment to explain why the Department of Justice responded and what our role is. AB 1506 was signed into law September 30th of 2020. This mandates the Department of Justice to investigate all officer-involved shootings of an unarmed civilian. On July 1st of 2021, the Department of Justice Bureau of Investigations was fully operational as of the mandate of 1506. DOJ will conduct thorough investigations by agents of the Bureau of Investigations. They will present cases to the Attorney General's Office, Deputy Attorney Generals, for a thorough review. We will be the filing authority for any criminal or charges related to officer-involved shootings, which we are the lead investigators. Attorney General Rob Bonta is committed to a thorough, independent, and transparent process. Since July 1st of 2021, the Department of Justice has handled 11 officer-involved shooting investigations. We have agents stationed throughout the state of California in our seven field offices. This case at the San Francisco Airport, we processed a scene with our Bureau of Forensic Services, our crime lab, with the San Mateo County Crime Lab. We had 12 agents respond to the scene. We collected video surveillance, and we have started conducting interviews. This investigation has just started. For information on this investigation and the 10 prior investigations, you can visit our website at oag.ca.gov/ois-incidences. I'll turn it over to Chief Scott.
Thank you, Chief Marsh, and now we will open the Officer Involved Shooting Town Hall to public questions. Because of the technical difficulties, we're running a little bit late, so we will keep the question and answer open for an hour, which will bring us to 6:02 PM. If we don't get questions or don't get questions through the hour, we will end the town hall when the questions or public comments cease. Thank you.
The public comment portion of this town hall will now begin. The length of time for public comment will be one hour. To call as the meeting, please call 1-669-900-6833. Again, the number to call to the meeting is 1-669-900-6833. ID number 846-568-94393, enter passcode 141067. Each public comment caller will have up to two minutes to speak. If you wish to join the queue for public comment, please listen carefully to the following instructions. Interpretation is available in both Spanish and Cantonese. If you're watching on Zoom, you may click the interpretation button and select your preferred language. This is available on the web and on the Zoom mobile app. If you're calling into the meeting again, please call 1-669-900-6833. Enter meeting ID number 846-568-94393, passcode 141067. You may press star nine to raise your hand to get in the queue to speak for public comment. You will be prompted when you have been unmuted and it is your turn to speak. Once again, each caller will have up to two minutes to provide public comment for this town hall meeting. Your two minutes will begin once you've been prompted that you've been unmuted and you begin speaking. Please be reminded, you must mute the broadcast you are watching in order for your public comments to be heard clearly. Again, if you're watching the broadcast online or through Zoom, please mute the broadcast or turn down the volume to prevent audio feedback so your comment can be heard clearly. Moderators, at this time, I will ask you invite the first caller, if any, into speech. At this time, we have no callers in the queue, and I will reread the instructions. If you're calling into the meeting again, please call 1-669-900-6833. Enter meeting ID 846-568-94393, passcode 141067. You may press star nine to raise your hand to get in the queue to speak for public comment. You will be prompted when you have been unmuted and it is your turn to speak. Each caller will have two minutes to provide public comment for this town hall meeting. Your two minutes will begin once you've been prompted that you've been unmuted and you begin speaking. Moderators, at this time, I will ask you invite the first caller, if any, into speech.
Hello, can you hear me?
We have one caller. Your two minutes begin now.
Yeah, can you hear me? Hello?
Can you please repeat your question?
Can you hear me?
Caller, if you could please pause, we're having technical difficulties. Be just one moment. Caller, if you could try and go ahead and ask your question once more. Sorry for the technical difficulties.
Can you hear me? I can't tell if I can be heard or not.
Caller, I apologize. We're just having a couple communication issues with the microphones. Ask your question one more time.
Can you hear me now? I have not found that I am being heard, but I will wait.
Can you speak one more time so we can see if it works? Can you speak one more time, so we can see if it works?
Can you hear me now?
Okay, caller, it sounds like we're hearing you a little better. Go with your question.
Are you speaking to me?
Moderators, at this time, I will ask you to invite the first caller, if any, into speech. Okay, caller, it sounds like we're hearing you a little better. Go with your question.
Are you speaking to me? No.
Okay, caller, just stand by.
I'm trying to try this one more time, if I could get some sort of confirmation, perhaps from the person signing. If she could nod her head up and down, I can tell if I can be heard.
Okay, caller, it sounds like we're hearing you a little better.
Thank you so much. I'm sorry for all of that. My name is John Crew. My questions for the department are mostly about the use of the ERIW, sometimes called the beanbag stun gun, or the foam gun in this incident. As you know, this city suffered a horrible tragedy six years ago when the Luis Gungor Pat was shot and killed after a beanbag stun gun was deployed almost immediately upon the officer entering the scene. The department knows that people in mental health crisis using that gun is not necessarily going to work, and sometimes it's going to be a form of escalation. I'm getting feedback here.
I know. Actually, if you give me a second to speak, I'll let you ask your question, so I can repeat it to the chief, okay? So go ahead and ask your question, and then I'll repeat it.
Okay. The question is, after...
Hello?
Yeah, I was automatically muted. Let's try again.
No, go ahead.
In the six years since this department suffered the tragedy of mentally, someone in mental health crisis being quickly escalated with a beanbag stun gun, which is a form of escalation, not de-escalation, provoking a response that ended up in an avoidable death, a six-figure settlement, disciplinary charges against the officer who had since left the department. What has the department done to ensure that officers understand that that is a way that is not necessarily going to work? It can be a form of escalation when used on someone in the midst of a mental health crisis. Secondly, what are referred to here as suspect officers, the specialist officers who arrived on the scene, and within five to seven minutes of actually approaching the scene, this incident that had been going on for quite some time ended up in a fatality. We hear Officer Number One saying, threatening, "I am going to hit you with a fist bump." "I'm going to fire if you cross that yellow line or barrier." There's no indication that there's any coordination with the hostage negotiator. Did that officer act on his own? And finally, I believe Chief Scott started this by claiming that the tragic victim here was raising the gun with his hand before he was shot. It looked to me, and only firsthand, like he may be falling back, indeed like Mario Wood fell back after he had already been hit either by the foam round or other one. Has the department enhanced that video and has already concluded that in fact, he was right?
I'm sorry, sir, your two minutes are up. The next caller, please.
Was there a question?
I have a question. I'm curious, as the other caller, if I'm able to be heard. Am I able to be heard?
Yes.
Okay. First of all, I'm noticing that there's a typo in the meeting ID. The one that's being spoken audibly is different from the one that's scrolling across the screen. So if you have an attrition or a lack of responses and calls, you should check the accuracy of the meeting ID. Second, I did have a question for the hostage negotiator. I'm wondering if, first of all, was the proper language used when addressing this individual who had the airsoft guns? And second, if there was an attempt to get a hold of maybe this individual's relative, someone that could connect with the individual? The body language, and I'm not a hostage negotiator nor a psychologist, seemed to indicate that the individual was not at all wanting to succumb to any kind of fatal injury, and that disturbs me. And lastly, there appears to be an ankle monitor on the individual. I could be completely off on that, but there is something on the individual's ankle. But I'm wondering if the person is in crisis, had he lost someone, had he broken up with a girlfriend, if those tactics were used to de-escalate? More psychology in finding out why a healthy, young person would be there with airsoft guns, engaging the police. So thank you, and good evening, Chief Scott. This is Angela Jenkins. Hope you're doing well.
Thank you, Ms. Jenkins, for your call and your questions. At this point in the investigation, we can't answer your questions, because as Chief Marsh said, it's really early in the investigation. At this point, we just put out the facts as we know them. Everybody who listened could hear what was being said in the radio transmissions, the dispatch calls, and the officers' communications among themselves. So at this point, we really can't draw any conclusions. The tactics, as well as the legality of everything that happened there, as well as department policy, will be a part of the investigations, the multiple investigations. And as this investigation unfolds, I'm sure some of those answers will be known, but at this point, it's really too early for us to be able to answer any of those questions with any conclusive evidence. Thank you for your question.
The meeting ID number, again, is accurate that we had said earlier. It is 846-568-94393. And the passcode, again, is 141067. Go ahead, you can ask your question.
Okay, I definitely have a question. I just have a comment, and I just wanted to say thank you to all the officers involved that day, after watching the footage and the presentation, commend the tactical officers involved with their communication skills with each other during such an intense incident. And I also want to commend the hostage negotiator. I'm impressed and grateful that these fine men and women serve and protect us every day at the airport as an airport employee. So that's just my comment.
Next caller, please. You have two minutes. Go ahead and begin.
Hi, just mostly a comment, just about that the community is watching, about how this murder is handled, knowing that it was aired in kind of the late-night news with no mention, just the town hall, just no mention of the murder in the title, that we're watching and would like to see a thorough, fair incident.
Thank you for your comments, caller. Is there a question?
No, we're mostly wanting to know what assurances have been provided that this investigation will be conducted thoroughly, publicly, and fairly, without any loopholes or...
Thank you for your comments, caller.
Next caller.
Hello?
Next caller, your two minutes begin now. Go ahead.
Am I the next caller?
You are.
I'm a nurse. I have had a lot of experience with de-escalation, although I don't have any guns, I just have a stethoscope. And I wanted to ask why other people weren't called in, people who have a lot of experience in de-escalation and in mental health crises. I know that the negotiator, the hostage team negotiator, was there, but it was obvious that he needed help from people who are calmer and who really know how to deal with severe depression and other mental health crises. If Mr. Zito had told the cops that he wanted them to shoot him, it was obviously a sign that he was severely depressed and needed some people to be calm, not to have all these guns pointing at him with people yelling, "Red line, red line, red line." That was not at all calming or helpful to someone who probably had severe mental health issues. I also wanted to ask about the airsoft guns and what indication there was, perhaps that it was airsoft guns? No one mentioned that in the presentation, that these were airsoft guns and not lethal guns. And the public did not know that until a day later. I'd also know if, I'd like to know if Mr. Nelson Zito has a family or friends who had connections with him and could possibly have been helpful, and if there is any support for them now.
Thank you, caller. I'll answer your questions, and if I, I believe I remember all of them, and if I missed one, please correct me. The first question you asked about whether or not other sources were called, if you, the videos will be online, all the body-worn camera videos with the audio will be online, as well as the transmissions from dispatch and the officers who responded to the scene initially. I would suggest that you listen to those videos, and all the resources that were requested were broadcast over the dispatch channel. So I would recommend that you maybe re-listen to the videos, and you can hear what was asked for. In terms of, let me answer the last question. In terms of Mr. Zito's family, it is my understanding that he does have family. We have reached out to his family, so he does have family. You asked a question in the middle about the, why the officers were yelling, I think you said, "red line." They actually were yelling "red light." And I can probably best that I just refer you to the Department General Order 5.01 as far as the protocols for the use of less lethal weapons. And it lays out what the protocols are, and then you can compare that to what you heard in the videos. So again, I cannot make conclusions at this time. The best that I could do is refer you to the policies. You can compare what you heard to the policies while the investigation takes place. And the conclusion of the investigation, of course, conclusions will be drawn, but at this point, it's too early for me to make public conclusions. Thank you for your comments and your questions.
A reminder to the callers, you may press *9 to raise your hand to speak for public comment after you've been called in. Next caller, your two minutes begin now. Next caller. Your two minutes begin now.
Yeah, hi. My name is Nimi Clausner. Hello?
Yeah, go ahead. Yes, it is.
Okay. My name is Nimi Clausner, and if you call those de-escalation tactics, you have a serious problem. As the previous caller stated, there are people yelling, "Red light, red light." That is not de-escalation. Did you offer this gentleman something to eat or something to drink? The only thing that was being told to him was to put down his weapons. There was very little rapport being established between the negotiator, the de-escalation person. If this person is the best that you have, he is totally inadequate. And I am just appalled that this man, who was surrounded by so much gun power, and he was in a corner, ended up having to die. It's reprehensible. I just, the loss of life and the lack of caring is just mind-boggling. So think about that a little bit. And, you know, I doubt that you'll change your systems there, but I just want you to know that there are people out here that are outraged at this type of behavior on the part of the police. Thank you.
Next caller. Your two minutes begin now.
Okay, so first, I would say, was it not determined that the gun Zito possessed were airsoft toy guns? Like, why was that serious fact omitted from both the first press release and this press release? In fact, somebody asked Chief Scott just a minute ago to comment on the toy gun, and he answered every question except for that one. In the first press release, the woman literally quoted, "At this time, we know the individual was armed with firearms. Airsoft guns are by definition not firearms." That was a lie. I'm gonna go on to say, lastly, we've seen that he was fired on, he was brought to the ground, yet he was still alive. At that time, we could see his left hand with the alleged gun never raises again, yet he got executed by a barrage of bullets. You also shot an innocent person by accident, so that was a terrible job. You called it de-escalation tactic, and even the hostage negotiator was condescending. When he said, "I got something in his throat," did he not respond, "No, you don't?" Like, that's just de-escalation? You feel me? Like, this was just a terrible job overall, and the red light and the directions y'all were giving him were so arbitrary for a person that's going through some mental confusion, some emotional problems? Like, y'all provoked that man, then y'all executed that man. That's cold-blooded, man. Chief Scott, you not making Nazism in San Francisco look cool because you a brother dead there.
Thank you for your comments, caller, to your question about the airsoft gun. As you can hear the comments of what was being said and observed by the officers throughout the incident, for those of you in the audience who aren't familiar with the processes, once that incident is resolved as far as a static incident, the scene is frozen. At that point, whichever investigative jurisdiction that has control over that jurisdiction takes over that scene. In this particular case, the initial jurisdiction was the San Mateo County Sheriff's Authorities, or San Mateo County Authorities, which includes their District Attorney's Office and the sheriffs. And as Chief Marsh explained to you, and also Commander Yip, and myself in my comments, at some point during the investigation, the notification was made to the California Department of Justice, and they responded. The point to all this is that scene was frozen until the California DOJ came to take over the jurisdiction of this investigation, which was many hours later. So the San Francisco Police Department did not have control over any of the evidence, nor does it to this day, and the investigation, for good reason, is frozen so that the appropriate investigative agencies can then process the evidence. We cannot put out information that we can't confirm. And at the time of the incident, we could not confirm what type of weapon that was. the incident, we could not confirm what type of weapon that was.
Next caller, your two minutes begin now.
Hi, yeah, I just want to say that, hello?
Yeah, go ahead.
Oh, I just want to say that tens of cops with rifles is not de-escalation. Shouting at a person commands without actually talking to them like a human being is not de-escalation. None of the things that those police officers did that day was de-escalation, and I think that what we really need are folks to come into that situation with resources and with talking to a person like a human being instead of talking to them hundreds of feet away and shouting commands at them. And it's very clear that SFPD is not equipped to do that, and SFPD is not equipped to actually treat human beings that are going through a mental health crisis like actual human beings. And I just want to say to the family of Nelson, and I'm extremely, extremely sorry for your loss. I don't think anyone today has said that in the press conference. And we at Defund SFPD Now want to help you and want to support you, and so if you need anything, I encourage you to reach out to us at Defund SFPD Now on, on Instagram or Twitter. And again, very sorry for your loss, and very sorry that SFPD has yet again killed someone in San Francisco.
Thank you, caller, for your comments. And just to remind all of our viewers and listeners, the comments that were read, and as far as the, my comments and Commander Yep's comments, are posted online. So for those of you that want to go back and refresh what was said during this town hall, you will be able to see those comments.
Next caller.
Hello, are you able to hear me?
Yes, your two minutes begin now. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Hi, I'm a resident of San Francisco, and first, I just wanted to comment that the public is watching in the situation, and we're calling for a fair and transparent investigation. We know that the institution of policing is rooted in a history of violence, and this is just another reiteration of that. There's an innocent man who's dead due to something completely unavoidable. My question here is, what could have been done to recognize during the situation that the man's guns were not real? He was surrounded by officers that clearly have firearm training, so why wasn't it detected earlier before that situation escalated?
Caller, thank you for your comments. As has been stated, and I'll repeat for the audience, the viewing and listening audience, what we are reporting today is what we have as far as the facts. For anybody who wants to hear what happened real time, what was being broadcast, what was being observed, not only by the officers, but by members of the traveling public at the San Francisco Airport, and members of the workforce at San Francisco Airport, the calls will all be posted online. Appreciate the caller's question, but I think the, anybody that wants to hear what was said and what was described in terms of what they believe they saw is all posted online. And I think at this point, none of the investigative agencies can draw conclusions about what could have been done differently at this point, because we are not nearly, nearly completed with any of the investigations. But you can hear for yourself what was said, what was observed, both by the public and the officers.
At this time, we have no callers in the queue. I'll reread the instructions. You may, once you may press *9 to raise your hand to get in the queue to speak for public comment. You will be prompted, and you have been unmuted. It is your turn to speak. Once again, each caller will have up to two minutes to provide public comment for this town hall meeting. Your two minutes will begin once you've been prompted, that you've been unmuted, and you begin speaking. Please be reminded you must mute the broadcast. You're watching in order for the public comments to be heard clearly. Again, if you're watching the broadcast online or through Zoom, please mute the broadcast or turn down the volume to prevent audio feedback, so your comment can be heard clearly.
Hi, so I just want to say, it sounds like y'all are completely uninformed and unable to confirm anything that led y'all to killing a human being. Police don't know how to de-escalate, and now a person is dead because you, because you executed him. Cops never de-escalate. They always escalate, and then they lie. So you don't de-escalate by surrounding a person and cornering them with guns. And no matter what the cops claim, we know that SFPD and the police are the enforcement of white supremacy and state violence. And I also just want to say that I'm sorry to the family of Nelson for their loss, and he should be here today.
Thank you for your comments, caller.
Next caller, your two minutes begin now. Next caller, are you there?
Yes, I'm there.
Your two minutes begin now. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Margaret. So I have several questions in two minutes. The first question that I have is, is that the DOJ is going to investigate this, right? John Marsh is going to investigate and have his preliminary finding to regarding the 1506, right? The California law, the California AB 1506, the police use of force, right, to rob Anetta? But there, I feel is, I feel, and I want Chief Scott to answer this question, is it a conflict of interest? The reason why I say a conflict of interest is because, I don't want to raise my voice, is because I feel it's a conflict of interest, is because Rob Anetta, he authored the bill of 1506. And now he, now that he is a California DA, he is, he is going to, he is going to investigate this. So this is not a fair trial. This is not going to be a fair, fair investigation. Can you please answer that, Chief Scott?
Thank you, caller. For your question, the Assembly Bill 1506 is now state law, so the protocols under which the California Department of Justice can take over a criminal investigation is actually mandated and dictated by state law. In this case, it was felt that it did meet state law, and that is why the investigation is in the hands of the California Department of Justice. And for the viewing and listening audience, that is the criminal investigation, the criminal investigation of whether the officer's actions are within the laws of the state of California.
Next caller, your two minutes begin now.
Hi, yeah. So I get to have like a comment as well as a question. Can you hear me? Is it coming through?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay. So the comment is just, I'm appalled at how many of these town halls I've had to join after, like, police executions. I mean, the body count of SFPD, like, it's, it's, again, appalling. I'm just throwing that comment out there because it's disgusting. My question is, what are actual tangible steps the SFPD will be taking in order for us to actually feel safe with you patrolling streets? How do we know we're not the next on the list? And again, tangible steps, something you can actually point to that will make a difference.
Caller, thank you for your comments.
At this time, we have no callers in the queue. I will reread the instructions. If you're calling into the meeting again, please call 1-669-900-6833. Enter Zoom meeting ID 84656894393. Enter the passcode 141067. You may press *9 to raise your hand to get in the queue to speak for public comment. You will be prompted, and you have been unmuted, and it is your turn to speak.
Hello?
Hi, sir, you have two minutes to speak.
Oh, I was gonna say, yes. Oh, am I, am I on?
Go ahead.
Sorry, is it my turn or the other person?
Hold on just a moment. We have both of you up. Let's get, go ahead, sir, with your question.
Is that me?
Yes, go ahead. You have two minutes.
Okay, like others have said, you know, it's completely unacceptable, the behavior of SFPD. It's not surprising because we've seen you do it over and over again with other people that you've killed in the city, like Luis Gangorra, who was brought up, like Mario Woods in 2015. SFPD does not know how to de-escalate, and it is completely unacceptable and disappointing that this continues to go on. My question is that, sorry, two things. I have two questions. One question is, how long, just for everyone on this call to hear, is the paid administrative leave that is routine for when, when an officer shoots somebody like this? And officers don't pretend officers don't know that they get that paid administrative leave. And secondly, my other question is, what are you, what steps are you gonna take? As another caller asked, which you did not answer, what steps are you going to take to make sure this does not happen again? To make sure that officers learn tactics for de-escalation? And I know you're not gonna answer these questions because you're afraid of whatever the consequences, legal, whatever else is gonna happen if you give us a concrete answer, but that's because you are not part of the community. The community answers to each other and takes accountability. You are not part of the community. And so we will continue to work to defund, disband, disarm you, and the anti-cop sentiment is increasing in the city. So if you're afraid of that, it's time to leave. So, and then my other, yeah, those are my two questions.
Thank you, caller, for your comment. I think one of your questions was, well, the second question is, what are we gonna do to keep the public safe, I believe? So part of this process, the town halls, first of all, is all about transparency. Putting the information out as we know it, we're not drawing any conclusions, and I'll repeat that, it is too early to draw any conclusions. At this point, we just put the facts out for you all to see them, all the viewers to see them. That is a form in and of itself of accountability, and that's why we do it. This police department has been very consistent with putting information out to the public. We have had town halls on every officer-involved shooting. And as we say on every town hall, at this stage of the investigation, no conclusions have been drawn. I think your first question also spoke to what's gonna be done. Once the investigations are finished, whatever issues that arise, number one, there is the criminal investigation, which is independent and done by the state of California. There is an independent investigation with the Department of Police Accountability, which is also an independent administrative investigation. And there is an administration by the San Francisco Police Department Internal Affairs. It is the administrative investigations and the criminal investigations, when conclusions are drawn, that we can take whatever needs to be modified, if anything, and move forward and make those modifications. Until that time, this is not what that is. This is just getting the information out to the public as transparently as we can, getting the information out that we're able to release at this time, and not to draw any conclusions. Thank you for your comments, caller.
Just a reminder that public comment will end at 6:02 PM. Next caller, your two minutes begin now.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, Chief Scott, this is Suki Lewis. I'm a reporter with KQED Public Radio. And I was just wondering, it sounded like you were saying you cannot confirm that there were, those were airsoft guns that he was holding, and I was wondering if Chief Marsh can speak to that, so we could get confirmation?
Yes, I'll invite Chief Marsh to the, to the podium, but let me, I, what I said when asked about what was broadcast that day, I think was what the question was referring to. And what I said was, at the time that these investigations are at their infancy, we do not put out information that we cannot confirm. I think the question was asked, why didn't we put out, something to the effect of, why didn't we put out the fact that it may have been an airsoft or was an airsoft gun that day, when this thing was going on and unfolding? And the answer is, we could not confirm that. And I explained the processes, the investigative processes, as far as who had jurisdiction over the evidence, which was not the San Francisco Police Department. With that said, we don't have the ability to examine any of that evidence at the scene, or at least in that, in this particular day, because we didn't have jurisdiction over the evidence. So that is what I said and was trying to explain to the previous caller. I hope that clarifies your, your question. And I could bring Chief Marsh up to the podium, and he can make any statements that the California DOJ may want to make about the, the guns. Thank you.
Yes, hello caller, John Marsh, again. We did make the determination through examination of the evidence that both guns were airsoft guns. It's not as easy as it, as it seems. A BB or a pellet gun is considered a deadly weapon. Airsoft gun is not. Through examination, when our agents arrived at the scene, and through communication with the San Mateo District Attorney's Office, the determination was made that they were airsoft guns.
Thank you. I just wanted to get that confirmation.
At this time, we have no callers in the queue. I will reread the instructions.
Hello? Hello?
Hi, your two minutes begin now.
Oh, am I on?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, I was gonna say, if the guns are airsoft or replica, or is it fluorescent pink, you have to assume that it's a deadly weapon. However, the officers could have gotten a mental health professional on the phone, either on Nelson's phone, having them contact him directly, or on an officer's phone, and that would have gotten one of the guns out of, out of his hands if he had complied with that. And also, if the guy had given his name and he kept his mask on, and he complained of something in his throat, that would have provided the officers with an opportunity to ask him to put away his face mask. That might have brought to his attention the incongruity of his own behavior, and I think that Nelson was kind of open to having it go either way. But yeah, it's not a good idea to show up at any place with any kind of, any kind of replica or anything that resembles a firearm, let alone at the airport. And I think the negotiator needed to change the narrative to, to gain empathy. I mean, I, I think they could have even asked the guy to, to lay down the guns so that he could, lay down the guns so that they could, you know, someone could get past him to go use the restroom, ask for a timeout, and just say, it's an emergency, whatever, just change the, the narrative and not make it all about, you know, some kind of high-stress situation, just kind of, even tell the guy that you're having a rotten day, you woke up feeling that it's gonna be a bad day, and you need his help to make the, to improve the day, to improve the outcome of your day. That's kind of where I think they needed to go.
Thank you, caller, for your comments. And just a reminder to the audience and the viewing and listening audience, the videos will be posted in their entirety, and for those that are interested, you can review the videos at your leisure and hear everything that was said by all the parties involved.
At this time, we have zero callers in the queue. At this time, we have zero callers in the queue. Again, I'll read the instructions. Please enter the ID code 846-568-94393. The passcode is 141067. Each public comment will have up to two minutes to speak. If you wish to join the queue for public comment, carefully to the following instructions. Interpretation is available in both Spanish and Cantonese. If you're watching on Zoom, you may click the interpretation button and select your preferred language. This is available on the web and Zoom mobile app. You must, you may press star nine to raise your hand to get in the queue to speak for public comment. Once again, each caller will have up to two minutes to provide public comment for this town hall meeting. Your two minutes will begin once you've been prompted that you've been unmuted and you begin speaking. Please be reminded, you must mute the broadcast. You're watching in order for the public comments to be heard clearly. Again, if you're watching the broadcast online or through Zoom, please mute the broadcasts or turn down the volume to prevent audio feedback, so your comment can be heard clearly. Again, the number to call into the meeting is 1-669-900-6833. ID is 846-568-94393. Each public commenter, a comment caller, will have up to two minutes to speak. If you wish to join the queue for public comment, please listen carefully to the following instructions. You may press star nine to raise your hand to get in the queue to speak. You'll have two minutes to provide public comment for this town hall meeting. Your two minutes will begin once you've been prompted that you've been unmuted and you Also, for community concerns or questions, you can email the chief directly at sfpdchief@sfgov.org, While we still don't have any callers in the queue, I'll reread the instructions. To call into the meeting, please call 1-669-900-6833. Again, the number to call into the meeting is 1-669-900-6833. Please enter the meeting ID number 846-568-94393. Enter passcode 141067. Each public comment caller will have up to two minutes to speak. If you wish to join the queue for public comment, please listen carefully. We have one caller in the queue. Hi, sir, you have two minutes, go ahead.
Hi, I have a quick question. So where can I find the videos online?
It's, it's, it will be on the San Francisco Police Department's website at sanfranciscopolice.org.
I went on the website, I actually couldn't find it.
They will be posted, sir, as soon as we conclude the town hall.
Okay, I see.
Within, within a short time thereafter.
Okay, great.
Thank, thank you for your comments and your question.
Again, for community concerns or questions, you can email the chief directly at sfpdchief@sfgov.org,
Okay, are there any other callers in the queue?
Hello, is anyone there?
Hi, you can go ahead and ask your question, you have two minutes.
In a few minutes, okay.
You have two minutes, your two minutes begin now.
Okay, okay. First of all, good evening, everyone. I'm actually, was a friend of the deceased Nelson, and he does have family, and he does have a large group of friends. This was not a homeless transient, as it was described in the newspapers and on the internet. I, I've never been to his home, but he was living on, I believe, Market and Van Ness in an apartment, and at some point, he worked for the city. I, I don't know what's been happening since the pandemic, but this was an individual who also volunteered at Sue kitchens, who fed disabled friends of ours food, you know, just whenever we had gatherings, he took the initiative to do all the feeding. This was a fine individual. I had no idea he'd had this mental break and needed to ensure his friends and family. If one of us had been contacted somehow, I believe the situation would have turned out differently. I do want the SF and Bay Area community to know that this was an individual who was loved by many, and he was not, you know, described as, you know, just a transient passing through the city. But he's, I believe, been an SF resident for many years, and went to Galileo High School as well. So that, that's, that's my public commentary to, to humanize him, and that he was a member of the community who had a mental break, and none of us knew what had transpired, apparently, with Nelson. And we're really devastated by this loss. That, that's all I have to say. I, I don't have a question at this time.
Thank you, caller. As, my condolences for the loss of your friend, and I sincerely mean that, and thank you
If you're in the queue, could you please unmute yourself? You may press star nine to raise your hand to get in the queue to speak for public comment. Next caller, your two minutes begin now.
I just wanted to make comments and support for the officers, who I feel did a good job, considering they thought that the man had two guns on him, and I also want to show my displeasure with the community for acting like hindsight is 20/20, and that they know how they would act in that similar situation, which is not correct, and it's just disappointing. And no wonder the San Francisco Police Department is short-staffed, because who in their right mind would want to work for this city? That's all I got.
Thank you, caller, for your comments.
Hello?
Press star nine to unmute your device. Your two minutes begin now.
Yes. Can you hear?
Yes, go ahead. I think you muted yourself again. Yeah, we can hear you, go ahead.
Okay, first I want to say, thank you very much for taking action and protecting the community that was present that day. I want to say that I commute daily, Caltrain, and I end up with BART at the airport. It's, the things I see on BART are very, sometimes shocking, from people doping up, to blood pouring out, to needles, all kinds of stuff. And I hear that San Francisco Police is short-staffed, too. I wish them that they would get more help. And for those making comments about defunding police, I think that's actually disgusting. I think it's something that you need to rethink, because it doesn't just affect people for a moment, it affects people for a very long time. And I think that the actual blame here should be on all those legislators and people that make laws, in order to keep this city, this community, safe, and it should have started somewhere else. Don't blame the police, don't blame those trying to protect you, those who are appointed to uphold the law and protect myself as well. And I just want to say thank you to you guys, and may this come out in a, in a fair way. And I want the best for the victim and his family, but this vitriol kind of attitude of people blaming the police is just disgusting. Thank you.
Thank you, caller, for your comments. Okay, we have no further callers in the queue. It is now 6:02, and that will conclude tonight's town hall. Thank you all for viewing, and again, my condolences to Mr. Zado's family. Good evening.